Welcome to the City Commission this evening. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome friends, neighbors, everybody on YouTube to the regular City Commission meeting of Monday, July 28th, 2025. We'll go ahead and start with roll call.
Benson?
Here.
Birch?
Here.
Brunick? Sarda?
Here.
Conkling?
Here.
Hanoff?
Here.
Mojer?
Here.
Spencer?
Here.
Mayor Villanueva?
Here.
City Manager Leon?
Here.
City Attorney Denherter?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda is going to be to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 14th. So before you are those minutes, Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any commission discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Okay, minutes are approved. Next, before you is a schedule of bills. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Move to pay the bills. Second.
Okay, have a motion in a second. Any commission discussion on that? Anyone from the public? Seeing no movement, roll call.
Mojer?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye.
Okay, passes, bills will be paid. And next, we have the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission and public. Few things to talk to you about tonight because we have a couple of weeks before we'll be meeting again, so I have a little list of things here. First of all, we may get some inclement weather here during our meeting, so if that occurs, as it did during the Planning Commission meeting not too long ago, we do have some emergency procedures. We're all just all going to be in the internal walls here in the hallway, so if you just, if our sirens go off on our phone, we'll just make a, have the mayor make a recess for the meeting and wait for updates on the weather. So hopefully not, but we've seen that in our area and had a lot of interesting weather this season. Secondly, want to talk to you about our sales tax. I did visit with the media about that, but as you saw, our sales tax was not very strong for June. We actually were down 2.55%, so cumulatively for the year, we are down .25%. It's definitely not the position we want to be in halfway through the year, so we are taking that into account and making some adjustments to the budget, which, as you know, we will be submitting to you and to the public later this week, and we'll talk, be talking about August 18th at your special City Commission Budget Work Session. Want to pass up and down the dais here, this information from the Yankton Fire Department and make sure that the public sees this. This is a different format than they've used in the past. This is from the Yankton Volunteer Fire Department, talking about what it is the volunteer fire department does and talking about the opportunity to support the volunteers. Now, as you all know, we provide equipment for the volunteer firefighters as well as training, but what we don't provide are things like meals, recognition for folks that volunteer or retire from the fire service, appreciation types events. They have an annual picnic, I believe. And so, this was sent out to residents in Yankton, and I just wanted people to be aware of that in the days of scams and things like that, that that's not what that is. It is legitimate. I've talked to Daniel Pendable about it, and it is a legitimate opportunity for our community. The party at the park that was scheduled for this evening, which is the finale of our summer reading program, was postponed until next Monday. That is the end of our summer reading program, so we asked that folks put that on their calendar. The organizers felt it's just too hot to have real itty-bitties down at the park at Riverside. The following day, if you haven't had enough fun, you should all come out to National Night Out. It will be at Memorial Park, August 4th, or excuse me, Tuesday, August 5th, and that's from 4:30 to 6:00. We have an opportunity to have some free hot dogs, meet your first responders, and get to know about all the work that they do. So there's an opportunity there as well. Wanted to mention that yesterday, Mount Marty had a special mass at Mount Marty Bishop Chapel, the 75th dedication, in fact, of that chapel. The mass was given by Bishop Kettler out of Sioux Falls. So it was nice to have that opportunity for our sisters and our community as a whole. Coming up, we will be talking with you Commissioners about when you want to hold your special election. Lisa and I are working on a memo, not your special election, your next election. Working on a memo with both timelines, the June timeline as well as November timeline, what that would look like for our city calendar, what that would look like for seated boards and commissions, what that would look like for you and terms. Just please visit with folks in the community, see what they're interested in. We're going to be talking to the school in the county. We'll bring it to a meeting for you guys to talk about before we ask you to act on it, but we should really know what it is the community's looking at, they want to do. We've heard both as preferences from different people, so it might just have to be a decision. We'll try to get some information on what other cities are doing. So far, I only heard about Sioux Falls planning on June, but certainly other communities might choose to do it differently. Lastly, on your consent calendar, there is right now one item, establishing a public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverages. We will ask that that be pulled, Mayor Villanueva, from the agenda. After having it placed on the agenda, getting the information together, the applicant informed us that the owner has decided that at this point, they're not ready to have this at the meeting. So probably come before you in the future, but not today. So if that could be pulled, we'd appreciate it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, Commissioner, any questions or comments for the City Manager? Only thing I would say is I just want to also wish the Benedictine Sisters congratulations on the, again, 75th anniversary of that dedication of Mount Marty Chapel. Also, a shout out to Yankton Baseball. I know there's Junior Legion, Legion and U-16 are all going to be going to state, and some are already on their way, so congratulations to all them.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Amy, so with the sales tax, it's probably somewhere in the, all the documents you gave us. I'm assuming that it's usually still pretty good, July and August. When does it start to normally go downhill?
Well, typically, towards the end of spring and summer, we see the numbers creep up, you know, with more tourism. The weather's nicer, people are out and about more. So this is unusual, but we've had some unusual things happen before, so I couldn't really tell you for certain, but definitely in the summer, we're not used to seeing negative numbers.
Sure.
That might be a reflection of some of things going on in the national economy, and maybe there is a reporting, you know, maybe there hasn't been somebody, or maybe perhaps a big sales tax entity that hasn't reported, or the state hasn't gotten reported to us. So it could be an anomaly, but we just want to move forward with caution, and maybe some of the things we had hoped to do this year, we may not do, but...
I was just wondering if maybe there's still a little window for a rebound if the next two or three months, things pick up, we can kind of catch up from where we were?
Yeah, I hope so. We'd have to be really strong in the last half of the year to catch up to where we'd like to be, but we're hoping that. And so anybody that can buy things in town as opposed to out of town would help that very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the question. Okay, next, under routine business at public appearances. So this is the time for anyone to come and address the City Commission on anything that is not listed on the agenda. Again, no action will be taken on a matter raised under this item until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda. So I'll ask, is there anybody that would like to come up to the podium right now for an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing no movement, we'll move on. So again, under two consent items, that party has pulled their request for their wine and beverage, malt beverage license, so we'll go ahead and take that off of the, off of the agenda. So please make note of that. Okay, next, we'll go to old business. So item one, this is a public hearing for transfer of alcohol, alcoholic license. Consideration of memorandum number 21-135 regarding the request for a transfer of ownership of a retail on-off sale malt beverage and South Dakota farm wine license from Yankton Missouri River Campground LLC to Bright Bird Properties LLC, owners Cody Guthur and Brittany Guthur, doing business as Yankton Missouri River KOA, 807 Billbags Road, Yankton, South Dakota, 57078. This alcohol license is not endorsed with Video Lottery. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion? Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing no movement, roll call.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mojer?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, under new business, first item, is a presentation and discussion of the 2026-2030 Strategic Plan, consideration of memorandum number 25-136 recommending that the City of, the City Commission discuss the 2026 through 2030 Strategic Plan, and request staff bring it back to the City Commission for action at the August 11th, 2025 meeting. Amy, you want to go ahead and tackle that first?
Thank you, Mayor. Not asking for action this evening, Commissioner, hoping that you will have some feedback. Perhaps we'll have some reaction from the public as well, but wanted to present to you the strategic plan, which you all know about because we've worked on it together this spring, but wanted to get through our comprehensive plan prior to bringing this forward. So I'll talk about sort of the big themes and the thematic things. Of course, we're not going to talk about every item, but this would be our 2026 through 2030 Strategic Plan. It is very ambitious and responsive. We think community-centered for the future, and some of the things you'll see are carryovers from our last strategic plan, which is okay, but one of the things that I've been happy and proud of this Commission and past City Commissions is the ability to think about the big things and what we want to get done, and then work towards them by staying focused on those themes. And so the first thing we talked about is tweaking our mission statement, and by and large, people were happy with our mission statement, and there was a suggestion, and I think we came to consensus those days, that we should change our mission to working together to provide exemplary experiences, services, and spaces that create opportunities for everyone to learn, engage, and thrive. And so stressing that intentional verbiage of working together, so not just providing it, but using the community and working with our partners in business, and also partnering agencies to get that done. Also, we talked about what our core values are and how we want to lead, how we want to serve the public, and how we want to try to engage with the public. We talked about staying future-focused and being service-oriented. We talked about the importance of being resilient and how necessary that is in today's age. We talked about collaboration and working with other folks when and where we can. We talked about being welcoming and how important that is, not just to new people, but to each other and to new ideas and being receptive and welcoming in that way. Also, acting with integrity. We had a little trouble wording that because all the other ones are a little bit more, they're verbs, and this is this more of an adjective to describe how we want to be, but if approved, those are the values that we want to reiterate and that our department heads talk about prior to solving a problem or trying to message something with the community. So also, we have some trends that we need to lean into that will support growth and support our plan. As we know, we're going to have to maximize our resources. So that's funding, that's people, that's partnerships, trying to work how we can to do that. Fostering leadership, so we do not end up having folks that are not ready to take steps forward internally in our organization, but also fostering leadership in the community. So we have people that want to be on our boards and be in our commission and work with us in that regard. Prioritizing infrastructure, knowing that that is the ultimate and most important job, is making sure that we have good streets, operable, and sufficient water and sewer services. So making sure that we're prioritizing infrastructure. Leveraging technology to help us get that, those things done. I think more and more we'll see that as something that comes forward as we move into using AI for more and more things, and we have more opportunities for technology on our equipment, et cetera. Building momentum, so not just in our organization, but engaging with other entities when they have success and helping them achieve what they are trying to do in their organizations. Engaging with transparency, so not just visiting with people, but also sharing with people. And sometimes we've been giving information dumps to people, that's what I guess we call them, like we just pile on information, and that's being transparent, but it's not really helpful. People can't understand it, or people can't digest it, or don't know what it means. So wanted to give people, we wanted to say that in a way that would make sure that we were showing people in a way that they can understand, but still making the information available. And that could even mean in a different language, and we're working towards that as well. A couple of big themes in the next six years that we are cut out for and we need to target, and you have in that document. Infrastructure and connectivity came as the number one, and you can see some projects that fall under that category, so implement, continuing to implement our active transportation plan, fill in gap, any gaps in that network, improving sidewalks and crosswalks, and providing transportation and completing 20, westward 23rd Street improvements. Also, bridge replacements and the, talking about the Walnut Pedestrian Bridge between Walnut Street and Douglas Street, planning for a 15th Street connection. Stormwater and wastewater, so we know that's an important part of our infrastructure, expanding our role as a regional water provider, establishing a plan to create and update the needs of stormwater and stormwater management, continuing with flood mitigation and stormwater improvements, which will likely change now that FEMA looks to be changing. So those types of things. Parks, recs, open spaces and events, talking about what are we going to do moving forward with all of our sports facilities? How do we continue to keep our facilities in good shape? Some of them are aging now. How do we continue to keep our parks maintained well as those grow? Looking at a park on the west side of town with Westbrook Estates, Garden Estates, some of those other housing developments building out. How do we make sure we're providing that open space for that community, knowing that we probably right now can't expand our staff to maintain? So working through that. Making sure that we're reviewing and updating our ordinance and policies, looking at tree inventories and replacements, things of that nature. And of course, talking about special events. How do we continue to do special events and what makes those events relevant in our community and interesting? So talking about that. Plans and studies is something we talked about as well, talking about partnering with Thrive to update our housing and retail studies in the future, developing not just a five-year capital improvement plan, but a 10-year plan, knowing that things are more expensive, we need more time to prepare for some of those bigger purchases. And we'll talk about that when we talk about a new fire truck in the budget coming up here in a couple of weeks. Some of our facilities could use some updating, and we could use some new facilities. We need to probably develop a plan for maintenance of some of the facilities, not just talking about when we need to build a new facility, but also, you know, HVAC equipment, rewiring, things like that, and getting those onto more of a schedule and plan, so we're not trying to catch up or having to replace things when they failed. So looking at that. Evaluating recycling and what that means for our Joint Powers Association, studying downtown parking in our utilities. Of course, looking at where we are with our library project, a big overall theme that we've talked about in a couple of strategic plans now, but wanted to work on other major infrastructure facilities first and other quality life facilities first, so talking about where that will end up. And then again, our partnerships, cultivating new partnerships, improving some relationships as well, because as you know, we'll be, as we expand, we'll continue to work with BYU Water, and we want to maintain a good relationship with them, continuing to work with Yankton County and help them identify areas where we can support our county, since we are part of a larger government there. And then also supporting some things that are happening in the private sector, such as Lewis and Clark Theater restoration and things of that nature. So all those are before you. I have gotten some feedback on items that you would like to have seen. One of the good pieces of feedback I received was, well, there's no contact information, there's no, there's no information there on where you go to find this plan. So we added the phone number and things like that. We also added a way to interpret the tier one and tier two goals. So I'm happy to answer questions, but really just putting this out for you and the community this evening to take a look at, discuss, and I'll bring it back. We would like you to act on it at some point in the future, but not this evening because I feel like the community needs a little time to respond to it to you. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, any questions at all for Amy, real quick? Like again, this is not an actionable item. It will be brought back, but again, just a present, presentation, so everybody can have some questions as the, as effort's been presented. Anything? Okay. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to then item number two. This is a review of the open meeting law. Consideration of memorandum number 25-137 recommending that the City Commission make a motion that they have reviewed the 2025 South Dakota Open Meeting Law and Direct Finance Office yearly to record the action in the official minutes. And so this is where I would have Ross step in here.
Actually, I think Amy's...
Oh, you are, okay.
It is more of in Ross's wheelhouse, but I asked Ross, Mayor, if I could take this one because we have a number of boards and commissions that will also have to review this, and I'd like to give it a chance here as I'll be going through this with a number of people throughout the course of the year. So as you all know, the South Dakota statute changed, so all public entities, and we believe entities that have any type of jurisdictional or judicial decision-making, like the Planning and Zoning, Joint Powers Board, Library Board of Trustees, need to review the open meetings document, the brochure, I guess they call it, on an annual basis. And so that update was provided to, to the state based on the Attorney General's recommendations just early in July or late June. And I don't really think anything's changed substantially from before, but it's a good reminder for all of us to understand, you know, that you are a governing body. So five of you should not, in a quorum, for example, meet out at frying pan. We try to notify the city media outlets if we think there's going to be a quorum somewhere. Five of you may just be together at a, at a, at a football game, and maybe you're talking about what a great play it was, but if somebody takes a picture of that, that might look like something else. And so we want to make sure we're staying careful about that. One thing, too, that I think is important to remember is that this applies to email as well, so if you're communicating with another commissioner or commissioners, you need to keep that under the number of a quorum, and especially reminding yourself that you're part of that. So if you have four people on that email, you've created a quorum. So a lot of times, when you see information from me, you'll say, you'll see, please do not hit reply all. Well, just as another safeguard, Ross recommended to me, maybe we put you guys in the blind CC, so replying all wouldn't then hit all of you, but that's a good reminder to everybody. As this changes, the Attorney General will also update and consider the information here. And so we will be doing this on an annual basis, following today's meeting. If you accept this and direct Lisa to place in the minutes that you in fact have received this and we've reviewed this, then each first meeting of the year, we'll make it a habit to review this with the full commission and talk about this. I'll be presenting it to Joint Powers in September, and also likely the Board of Trustees for the library in September, and Brad Bees will be working with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there may be a couple others that we need to hit too. But important to note, also, there's some good information here on telemeetings and things like that, and then what to do if we should, you know, stub our toe if something occurs and we have failed inadvertently to notice the media and we've had a quorum there. What, what to do then and how to report that to the Public Meetings Commission. Hasn't happened yet, but certainly can, and we all know you're, everyone's trying to do their best, but I think especially important in the communities that have three-member commissions, it's really easy to get two people together because they're very small towns. So I'm happy to answer questions, and if you have legal questions about open meetings, probably bounce those to Ross, but again, you all are asked to read and review this, and I'm sure you did because you looked at the packet. So just looking tonight, Mayor, for a motion that you, it's been reviewed and that Lisa puts in the minutes that you have had that presented to you and reviewed. Amy, if I could clarify, because I'm pretty sure, it's not just email, it's all written communication, right? So like text messaging is also something we have to be careful of. It's any written communication, correct? It's not just... Good reminder, and certainly we talk to you all at times about Facebook and other social media, things like that. So, you know, it's one thing if you say, hey, it looks like you had a great time on your family commission or your family vacation, and four other people put a thumbs up, but if you're talking about city business and people are commenting, you know, that could be misconstrued or misunderstood. I'm not sure how that would legally play out, but it's always better to err on the side of caution. So some of you I know have sort of personal social media where you post your personal things, and some of you have formal City Commission social media, and some of you stay off social media, and that can be a good policy sometimes, too. So yes, all forms of communication.
Also, Amy, where can the public go to find these public businesses?
That brochure is on the Attorney General's website, so there is a public meetings, open meetings section, and there's an open meetings commission, actually, that also will hear cases, I guess is maybe the right word, or situations where maybe a public entity has stubbed their toe, or maybe is in question of having done the wrong thing. But it's under the Attorney General's website, there's a pull-down. It's not real easy to find front and center, but there's a pull-down, and you can find it there. And my understanding is they're going to update it annually.
Okay, and I suppose if the, the public had a question, we could always probably help them find that and provide it to them as well.
Yep, we can, we can put it on our website, too, if, I mean, it would just be linking it to our site, too, so...
Okay. Okay. Okay, so then with that explanation, I guess I'm looking for a motion and a second to essentially just say that we have been presented this and that we have received it officially.
So moved.
Second then.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. Any commission discussion?
I would just say that I think we covered an awful lot of the material in that brochure when Ross did his dashboard presentation a couple of meetings ago. So we, we've talked about this earlier and at length, so I think this is good.
Okay. Anyone from the public? Okay, seeing no movement, roll call.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hanoff?
Aye.
Mojer?
Aye.
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye, motion passes. Okay, next on the agenda, we have under new business, item number three, the Douglas Avenue Water Main Project. This is consideration of memorandum number 25-138 regarding the reconstruction project of the Douglas Ave Water Main and Sidewalk installation from 19th Street to 21st. So real quick, this is just a reminder that this is, right now, is not an actionable item. This is one of the things where, which I think is a good thing, where two commissioners were able to bring something to be put on the agenda for discussion. And I applaud the public for being here. This is, I say all the time, that I want you to be here to give us direction and opinion. I'm glad you're here to do that. And so thank you for being here. And so first, what we're going to do is I'm going to have Amy go ahead and explain what we have here tonight.
Yeah, so I'll give a little history here and then fill in any blanks or try to answer any questions people have because since this is, since the memos come out, more people have asked more questions that, with information that's not in this memo. So I believe it was May 12th, so it would have been our new commissioners' first commission meeting. We had before you an opportunity to award a bid to reconstruct the water main and street from 19th Street to 21st Street. So I did attach in your memo sort of the little snippet from the minutes regarding who was awarded the bid and who all put bids in, et cetera. And that was unanimously approved by this commission. And in that memo, which is attached to this particular evening's memo, we did include information that there would be sidewalks. So I did get a question as to when we first started talking about this project. And this project came up to the seated commission in 2022. We talked about the need for it in the future. So we talked about it probably in May or early June of 2022 and put it in the 2023 budget for construction season 2027. Our street department annually drives the streets, looks at the streets and determine that, you know, the condition of the street was such that this needed to happen earlier, sooner rather than later. And so that's why it was moved forward into the capital improvement plan. In talking with our environmental services director, Kyle Goodmanson, our engineering staff found out that it's cast iron water main in that area. And that's the oldest type of water main we have. And yes, definitely also needed to be replaced. So that's why all those components are into that project. So in conjunction with the active transportation plan, we started to design that street. And as the commission knows and the public may or may not know, our active transportation plan calls for construction of sidewalk on both sides of the street, arterials for arterials and collectors. Local streets, we try, when we can, to put sidewalk on both sides of the street. Not always possible, so that doesn't always happen. And if there's questions about a particular street, we can do our best to answer those. But since 2016, when we adopted the active transportation plan, we've installed just under 17 miles of new sidewalk. We also do some sidewalk projects that are not associated with streets. So that was a question we had, too. So some of you will remember that we increased the Yankton road tax not too many years ago. And we did that so we could follow the comprehensive plan and strategic plan and our active transportation plan and get more sidewalk in more quickly. And so, for example, soon you will receive information regarding some sidewalk around and near the middle school. We prioritize areas based on walkability, if there's a school or a park or commercial area. One of our first active transportation projects was in front of Walmart and like El Tapatio, where there was sort of a cow path for people walking across there on Broadway since they just didn't have anywhere to go. And so we have a list of those. We have much more sidewalk to put in than we have dollars for, but we certainly do try to be intentional about connecting our streets. And when we do, when we do a street project or a water main project and we're disrupting the street, we make sure that we follow what we call complete streets. So making sure that those are opportunities for everybody to ambulate, navigate, et cetera. So that's where the whole concept of sidewalk comes from. Recently, in 2024, we updated that transportation plan. So a lot of our projects in the 2016 plan were completed. We also added some new ones and have a long list of sidewalks to continue on with. And so we do also have a sidewalk program where we encourage people to put in sidewalk and will help reimburse for a portion of that if they choose to do sidewalk and they don't have them already. But these are not assessed projects. This is a project that is paid for out of the city budget. So there's opportunity there. Whenever we do do a sidewalk, whether it's part of an active transportation plan or part of a street project, we try to work with the neighborhood. So a lot of times, people have things like, I don't know, little libraries or special landscaping and flagpoles, things of that. And so we'll work with people. Some of you will remember that we had a local street project done a few years ago and there was a very special tree. And contrary to what everybody says, I don't hate trees. And so we actually worked with that property owner who allowed us to redesign our sidewalk a little bit to accommodate for that tree. It was an old, beautiful tree, and so we did that. So our engineers try to be practical. We don't want to add, you know, cost unduly, but if it makes sense and we can work with them, we do. And certainly, that's the case with this project. I believe we've communicated with the property owners upfront and told them that this project will include sidewalk and we asked for their feedback and we got some feedback. So in your packet, I believe, is the, I want to make sure I'm saying this right, is the sidewalk map. So you can see the map of where the sidewalk is designed to go. And so for those of you who are not engineers, you can see it's laid out pretty clearly that it will be currently installed. It's currently installed on the east side of the street. We're talking about sidewalk on the west side of the street. It's pretty close to the curb to not disrupt or disrupt as little landscaping as possible.
Sorry to interrupt. Can we bring that up?
Oh. Dwayne, are you able to bring that map up?
Thank you, sorry to interrupt you. I just thought it'd be good for everybody to see what you're talking about.
I need a drink anyway. Pause here till he gets that map up.
Mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
So when they actually started designing this project, how long ago was it? I mean, it's not like a month. How many months, years?
No, typically, and if I'm wrong, they'll shake their head and tell me otherwise. But typically, we do a lot of the design work in the winter months. But we, because, you know, construction isn't going on and so they, and we do put the bids out for another opportunity for people to see them online so people can look at the bids once, and the plans, once they're ready. And so I presume it was sometime early this year or even fall of last year and bid out, I would guess, in April. We have to follow state bid law. And then we brought it forward to you to consider in May. And the contractor was good also to work with us on timeline because apart from being a major arterial, the first thing that came to everybody's mind was riverboat days. And so we can't, you know, we can't, we gotta get, we can't get in the way of a parade. So now you have the same map I'm looking at here on my laptop. And for those of you who aren't familiar with looking at the construction plans, you can see that the sidewalk is tucked fairly close to the curb for that reason because we have seen that a lot of people have made some good investments, nice investments, to their properties there. The little icons that look like bricks, which everybody with an engineering background can laugh at me for, but those are the ADA compliant, I guess, inserts that they put in so people using a cane or some type of device can find those and know where the sidewalk approach is and where the sidewalk begins. So you can see as you go towards the north that we're trying to avoid as much as possible the investment that's been made to. We have a property owner at the very north side of the street who indicated that they're wondering if we could kind of jog around a bit. He's invested in some nice landscaping and rock. And I like that because I'm always stopped there after work. And so it's nice to look at that. But he and his wife were okay with us going, making a little dog leg so we could save some of that landscaping. So we do that when we can and try to be as accommodating as possible. I did misspeak. Somebody asked me, "Oh, you're going to cut down more trees." And I said publicly that there were no trees that were going to be cut down. There is, in fact, one tree that will be cut down. And I'm not, I'd have to go back through to each slide and look where that is. But there will be, and our engineers communicated with the property owner impacted by that. So I did miscommunicate that, I apologize. But I think it is an ash tree. It's not an ash tree. There's not any trees. Then I'm missing, I might be thinking of another project. So no one, that's even a better thing if nobody has any tree coming. I might be thinking about a different project. Nope, that's even better for all of us if no trees are coming out. So long and short of it, that's the project and that's what's being described. The bid was awarded so because when the commission awards the bid, we go ahead and issue a notice to proceed with the contractor, start working with the contractor and they're underway. So that's where we're at as a staff and that's our direction. And so I'm happy to answer questions if I can, either about the specifics of the project or any history and how we got to sidewalk on Douglas.
Well, before we take, I think, before we hear questions from the commission, I'd like to go ahead and have the public speak on this. I know they came here and again, I appreciate you all being here. So I'm going to go and open it to the public now to have you give your comment before we take commission questions. That way we can answer any that you might have.
Quick question. What's the indentation on that purple line?
So the question is, what's the?
When's the curb? When's the grass? When's the sidewalk?
So the question is, what's the indentation on the purple line? Are you talking about, are you talking about the, right next to the curb? Are you talking about the where it jogs?
Talking about the west side of the street, that purple line. Is the sidewalk going to be buttoned up against the curb?
Yes, yes, it will be.
It's going to be flush to the curb?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
There's going to be a bump.
Okay. Okay, so I'll go and open it up. Open it up to the public. Come on up. Please just state your name and if you're representing someone, please, who are you representing?
Thank you, I'm Mike, I'm Mike Marlowe.
Is the mic on? Mic?
It's on the front side, on the base of the mic there.
There we go. Thank you.
Got it, thank you.
I'm Mike Marlowe. I've been asked to visit with you tonight on behalf of Larry and Diane Ness, Haylen Property on Douglas Street there. Have just a quick handout. I'll be as brief as I can.
And before you, before you get started, typically, we do three minutes. And so I want to give everybody at least three minutes to speak. And so I will, if you're getting close to or over the three minutes, I'll give you a warning and please just wrap up. Thank you.
I think I know most, if not all, of you. But again, my name is Mike Marlowe. I'm attorney here in town. And I appreciate the opportunity to come and visit tonight with you. But it seems like the horse is already out of the barn. We've already awarded the bid and all that sort of thing. And respectfully, I think that we are doing this procedure backward. Ross and I had a very nice conversation last week. And I'm certainly not saying that anybody had any ill intent in the way that this whole notice and procedure was handled. But right now, as we're standing here, the Nesses are required to show you that there's no need for the proposed sidewalk. And that's really, that's really backward from your ordinances and also from state law. Your ordinances say, and you can look at the first one, section 2138, previously built buildings. Okay, this is definitely, all these homes are previously built buildings. And as you can see in section A there, it says, "The general rule." When you have pre-existing buildings and you're going to put a sidewalk in or you're contemplating putting a sidewalk in, the general rule is if there's one on the other side of the street, where there's clearly is in this case, you don't put a sidewalk in. There's no requirement for a sidewalk if you've got a good one on the other side of the street and it's an existing structure. Now, if the neighbors want a sidewalk, they can go and petition to the neighbors, can petition the commission to have a special meeting. And of the people that show up, if 50% of them vote for the sidewalk, you can get a sidewalk. Except, this commission can override that decision of the neighbors under certain circumstances. And you can see the waiver provision there, section E. And the pertinent one here is. So even if the neighbors all want it and they come to you and they vote for it, you folks can still override it where the existing sidewalk on the opposite street extends at least 75% of the block in which the waiver is required. Clearly, that's the case here. So even if the people want it and they come to you and they vote for it, you can still say, "Wait a minute, that's not an efficient use of our funding. We don't want to put that extra burden on some of the property owners maybe that didn't vote for it. And if there's a good sidewalk on the other side, we're good to go. No need for a sidewalk."
Can I ask you for a clarification?
Sure.
You said you don't have to put a sidewalk in if there's one on the other side.
True, you're not required.
You're not required, but it doesn't say you can't.
That's correct. My second point. Thank you for the segue there. So if you decide, and remember, that was, that was an action taken, vote of the people about 30 years ago, kind of an uproar over putting sidewalks in existing places. And so they referred it to a vote and an overwhelming majority of Yankton citizens said, "It's going to be the policy of the city of Yankton through our ordinances that if there's a good sidewalk on the one side and it's an existing circumstance for the buildings, we're not going to put sidewalks in. We're not going to require somebody to have a sidewalk there." Okay? Now, can you do it? Under state law, you can do it. I'm contending that under your own ordinances, that's not permissible. You can't require that a sidewalk be built in front of somebody's house unless you go through that procedure that's been established, the neighbors come to you and request it. Now, under state law, that's 946.2, 946.2.1. State law allows a municipality to require that a sidewalk be built. Says, "The governing body deems it necessary that any sidewalk be constructed and after plans, inspection, files, et cetera, a governing body shall draft a proposed resolution of necessity for a sidewalk." You folks remember voting on a resolution of necessity for this sidewalk? No, you didn't because it wasn't ever brought to you. And I guess what we're saying is that if the folks in Yankton have already voted on it and said, "We don't want or need this sidewalk and you're going to follow state law instead," which is, it's legal, you can do that. But if you're going to follow state law, then you got to follow it. You got to give my folks due process. And due process in this case says that if you're going to build a sidewalk.
Mike, that's four minutes. So that's okay if you'll wrap it up. I'm going to give everyone else then four minutes to speak.
If you, so it says if you're going to build a sidewalk, you have to do certain things, including give people notice, specifically the public and the individuals. And it says very specific notice that was not given in this case. And you should also note that in 2016, this very sidewalk in your, the last sidewalk need map, there was no need for the sidewalk. It's not listed. What changed in that neighborhood since 2016? Nothing. The map is the same. We got the swim pool there, we got all the houses are the same. So all of a sudden, it goes from zero need to a, one of the highest rated, and it's a red number. I think also your plans and goals in your, in your Yankton 2045 plan say that you're supposed to avoid just this kind of a thing. And I can go through those at some point. So I think in this case, what we're asking. at some point. So, I think in this case, what we're asking you to do is, is just follow the procedure, give my folks due process under state law, and then we'll have a hearing where the city can come and say, this is why we need this. And other folks, you come in and you tell us your thoughts and perhaps you'll decide that you don't need that. I'm happy to answer questions too, if I'm allowed.
Any questions?
Doesn't the letter that was sent out April 14th or 24th serve as notice?
It does not comply with state law, not even close. But the state law is very specific. You have to publish notice to the public and then also give specific notice within a specific amount of time. It's within 10 to 20, within 20 days and less than 10 days prior to the, to the motion that you have on the specific need for a sidewalk. You can't kind of put it in with a whole big construction project. You have to have a specific, you have to have a specific motion and action by the commission. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anyone else?
Paul Piremilo, 2001 Douglas. So, I have a deck that, you know, I sit out on often and I just see the traffic. I see the, the people walking. I bought the house for a reason. I love the buzz of the park. I was a springboard diver, don't judge me, but I bought it for the visual of the, and I can still see it once I gotta cut a limb and get my neighbor's permission. Anyway, there's, I don't know, what Mr. Marlowe was saying, it's like, it's not needed. And what I was saying, when it's up against the curb, it's gonna look forced. Like, it's gonna look dangerous. I wouldn't even mind, you know, ABS or Calman's, Perspere Calman, be like, would you feel comfortable with people walking that close? You know, and the people that do periodically park on this side of the street, they're jaywalking right to the pool. And that's okay, right? Even if you had a sidewalk, they're still gonna jaywalk. So, I just don't see the need for this. What I do, and I, I do wanna say positively, the sidewalks that were done in the park are beautiful. That intertwined Yellow Brick Road type thing, eight feet wide. I mean, that is, is so nice. You know, I walk my dog, she walks me. And, you know, growing up, east coast doesn't matter. The Meridian District, a nice wide sidewalk is beautiful from not having to throw elbows. Wouldn't it be nice to hold hands? And now, oh, we got people coming. You know, it's like, I would prefer, if dollars are to be spent on a sidewalk, I would prefer that Memorial Park be proud. You know, it's like, you started off awesome. And I think that can continue. I do not think a sidewalk on this side of the street is gonna do anything for anybody. You know, other than, I don't know, George Calman would be like, that might be an accident waiting to happen. Just saying. But if we put those dollars into ADA, whatever, because, you know, I tried measuring, it was just so hot out yesterday. But the measuring the widths, and if you look at the distance, you know, coming up Douglas, the recesses of the sidewalk to a main drag, right? This is our sixth main drag, something like that, whatever. The sidewalks are so back off and polite, right? You don't have to worry about driving when you see, you're not even looking up there. Because they're far and away. But I just, I think if you, you start off great with Memorial Park as far as the sidewalks go. The entertainment, I see people doing laps, walking their dogs, walking. And they're not gonna walk on the side of the street. I mean, when I sit out on my deck periodically, I'm not saying when I have the sprinklers on. Just saying. No one's gonna be walking then. All right, bad joke. Deadpan. But yeah, it's, it's unnecessary. You know, that's all. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your opinion. Appreciate it. Okay. Anyone else from the public like to speak?
Hi. My name is Michelle Flannery. My husband Kurt and I have lived here in the community for approximately 47, 48 years. We purchased our home in 1978. It was built in 1931. Many of you remember Roger Pierce. He commonly referred to us to Ray and Nelva Coystre and Kurt and Michelle Flannery as the Park Nazis. Because we care about that park. We truly, truly care. We went to many meetings prior to the pool coming down and the new build coming up. We're proud of that park. We're proud of what, what our properties look like. Only because I happen to be visiting with some of the neighbors did I realize 95% of us felt the same way. We value how our property looks. I wanna go back and reiterate some bullet points here that Diane and Larry sent on to you commissioners and Amy. And this truly, I asked for permission today from Diane to repeat this to you. Because it really states the facts. Mr. Marlowe came to you and just stated, "We didn't have any say in this. We received our letters. We started," my husband called Brad, started asking questions. Brad assured us, "Don't worry," yada, yada, yada. "We have two huge, beautiful trees in front of our property. They're not probably the tree of choice, but they're the trees the city gave us 46 years ago. It protects our property from noise. It allows wonderful shade on our property. We have some concerns. If you put that six-foot, five-foot sidewalk, whatever it is, from the curb up, right now, my husband complains every time he mows because the root systems are so high on that, on those trees. What's gonna happen to our root systems? We don't wanna lose those trees. Brad assures us we won't. So, I trust this." But I wanna share some of this stuff because I think this is important. First of all, I want us to say something. I believe that most individuals, something that we have to really learn in life is the difference between a need and a want. A need and a want. And I propose to you as a commission, is this a need or is this a want? I, we had a son in a wheelchair for years, months I should say, excuse me. I looked for places like what we have as an ADA-approved sidewalk across from Douglas. I looked for those places to get Rob around so that we would be safe. I firmly believe, and now I'm gonna just quickly, because I know I don't have a lot of time, go back and reiterate some of the things that Diane and Larry put together for us. And I think it's important for us to all hear this again. There is already an ADA-compliant sidewalk along the east side of Douglas, which continues for many blocks, both north and south. It's a nice wide sidewalk. There's ample green space between the sidewalk and the street, making it a safe route for everyone with or without special needs. It's highly unlikely that anybody would cross to the other side for two blocks since this is available. And I invite any of you commissioners to come up for a coffee in the morning or a bottle of beer at night. We can show you, A, how busy it is on 21st and Douglas, going south and going north. Or, passionately, I'm jumping around with my thoughts here all of a sudden, but since Kurt and I purchased that property in 1978, the increase in traffic is phenomenal. I believe there was a feasibility study done in the project prior to building the current Aquatic Center. I don't know what year that was. But I believe that feasibility study told the citizens of Yankton, "Do not build something of that capacity on the second busiest intersection in Yankton."
That's four minutes. Please wrap up.
Oh, dear Lord. Okay. So, back, I'm gonna wrap this up. There's five bullet points here that Diane and Larry made. I would, certainly I can run this off and share those with you. It seems like a huge waste of taxpayer dollars to be spent on putting the sidewalk on the landowner's side. It seldom is gonna get used. We have such heavy traffic in that area, heavy, heavy traffic. If I was a responsible parent, which I hope that I have been, I would always encourage my children to get away from that. I can honestly say, Diane asked me, "How many kids have I seen crossing?" In my mind, biweekly, I've watched two or three groups of children, in those groups, maybe two or three, that are coming on the sidewalk in the park and crossing down where Kishas live. Most of those young individuals are going down to where Zarbox live and they're coming behind us. And so, that makes perfect sense. You would not send your child on the busy intersection on Douglas. Today, I spoke with a couple of neighbors. They were talking about the kids that live to the east. They are using 21st Street to get to Stewart School. They're using that. By putting a sidewalk there, we are asking for trouble.
Okay, that's time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Okay. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this matter? Okay. Please just state your name when you come up.
I'm Renee Bowser. I'm just a concerned citizen and it's all been kind of one-sided here. So, I just would like to say a few words. If it's the second busiest intersection in Yankton, maybe we need to put sidewalks on both sides of the street to keep people safe. I mean, the city commission, we vote for them to do what's best for Yankton, not for individual landowners. And I guess I'm just for keeping people safe. As a teacher, retired teacher at Stewart, I was one of those crossing guards and I can tell you, there were several times where you almost got hit by a car. People are distracted nowadays with cell phones and all kinds of stuff. I just think that keeping people safe is important. And Mr. Marlowe said, "What changed since 2016? Aquatic Center. That brings a lot more traffic to that area." I, I don't know, that's, I just, safety is what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you for that opinion. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the public like to come up and speak to this item? Yes. Come on up. Okay. Please just state your name.
Denise Webin, 1810 Mulberry Street. And I was at the Strategic Planning Commission earlier this spring. And at the same time, we were speaking of the sidewalks on Douglas Avenue and also the sidewalks on Mulberry, 19th Street, doesn't have any sidewalks. And I was wondering if we're also including sidewalks here on Douglas? Are you also talking about installing the sidewalks from Mulberry to Burley on 19th Street where the little girl passed away?
That's part of our active transportation plan for this fall. So, that's gonna come before the commission to, it's been designed.
Okay.
And it's out for bid. So...
Okay.
When we have the bidders, it'll be up to the commission then to award, or not award, but that's a plan.
Okay.
To do that.
Okay. This is just a little different program than the...
Right. So, this is...
One on 19th and Mulberry.
Part of the complete streets. So, when we redo a street, the practice has been to, you know, depending upon the type of street it is, install sidewalk if there's not sidewalk already. And then we also have areas where we just know that sidewalk is needed.
Okay.
So, that particular area is one of them, one of many. And near the middle school and Boys and Girls Club.
Right.
And there's a lot of pedestrians there too and a lot of traffic, especially certain times of the day. So...
Okay. So, that's not gonna come up as, as this did, whether you want it or not and all that?
Yeah, I guess I don't know. It'll be up to the commission to award it and we'll take that direction.
Okay.
I can let you know when it's on the commission for consideration.
Okay. Very good. I just saw sidewalks in Douglas and it's kind of right around my area and I thought I would just follow through and see where...
Yeah. That's planned to be part, to be, to be presented to commission and if awarded, then installed yet this fall or hopefully before the start of school year.
Okay, great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else from the public like to come and speak? Okay. Come on up.
John Housman, 2017 Douglas. Probably have all seen me walking my little dog around the park like three times a day for seven years now. I kinda got two things. The reason I didn't say anything or didn't fight before is because I didn't know I could. Simply didn't. I didn't know it was an option. And then I started digging here this last couple of days and found a lot of the same stuff Mr. Marlowe did. I also found all the ADA stuff. ADA's only gotta be 36 inches. You don't know how to put a five-foot sidewalk in. If it does come down to it, to us losing this battle. An ADA sidewalk must be three feet wide for continuous passage with the passing areas of five by five feet provided at intervals, no further than 200 feet apart on narrower sidewalks. Those are driveways. You ain't gotta put a five-foot sidewalk on there. Why? You know? And as far as ADA goes, the brand-new sidewalks that have been put in at Memorial Park aren't ADA. They're busted to crap in a bunch of places from city trucks driving over them. ADA can't be broken. You can't have broken spots. So, I mean, why don't you fix the stuff that's there before even considering putting stuff on the other side? And like I said, Mr. Marlowe had a lot of the other stuff that I had. My second thing is, the last time they tore up that street, it was before I bought my house. I don't know when it was. But they put the sewers going up. So, this time when they dig that street up, can they fix my sewer so I don't have stuff coming up in my basement? I mean, I had to dig up my yard to put cleanouts in. And I had an outfit out of Hardington P&amp;E come and install cleanouts. And when they put the camera in, they said, "Yeah. If you ever have the chance, here's your proof. Your sewers go up from the street into, into the city sewer." So, I, and I didn't scream, yell, whine, moan, complain. I just dug up my yard to the tune of Sixth Grand and put cleanouts in because of the city screw-up years ago that I couldn't control. That was before my house. So, I kinda had two little things going on. And I'm sure other people have other, but, and I did drive around town. There is a lot of places that have sidewalks. And Amy did mention that they are gonna be addressed. Like the Trailhead Learning Center, you can see where the flags stop. Hopefully that house on the end of Douglas gets a sidewalk on it. But the flag stopped there. Why? You know? There needs to be a sidewalk going along Hillcrest. No. On the golf course, going up Panana, there should be a sidewalk there. There needs to be a sidewalk in the cemetery on the other side of Broadway. You don't know how many times I've avoided prisoners on bicycles going back and forth to try to catch the sidewalks after Ace Hardware. Ace Hardware doesn't have one. There are just a couple more. But you got prisoners and people walking to Walmart back and forth from the trailer courts and all the apartment buildings, back and forth to try to, on Broadway. And we have an officer here that could probably attest to that too. That, and that's a 45 mile an hour zone. Why is there no sidewalks on both sides of the street? You know? So, maybe, maybe address this in a future date. But it's easy to put a sidewalk in. Brad knows. I'm putting one in right now. It doesn't take much. You don't have to have a big city street replacement project to put a sidewalk in. So, I've said my piece. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your opinion. Appreciate it. Okay. Anybody else? Yes. Come on up, please.
Hello, everybody. My name's Terri Eichelberg. My husband Randy and I live on the corner of East 21st and Douglas, in the dirty white house, we call it. May, and to what John was saying, May of 2022, we had sewer back up in our basement. And that was after the swimming pool was built. And we still had... had sewer, and we had a plumber there at that time too, um, that checked our pipes, and they were clean all the way out to the street. But when I talked to the city about helping us take care of the six-thousand-dollar bill that we had because of it, we couldn't, I mean, we got nothing, nothing from the city at all. And it wasn't our issue, it was the city sewer line that backed up. I think we were told it's because of all the grease that people pour down their drains that caused our basement to back up with a good solid inch of sewer. I mean, this is funny, but I had a little pink guitar that was floating up from our drain. I don't have any kids, so where did it come from? So, and to add to that, you know, if, if they are gonna rip up the street yet again, I hope that they can take a look at that and try to make sure that that doesn't happen again to some of the homeowners in that area. And then, just on the sidewalk situation, I'm here to support my neighborhood, um, we already have a sidewalk in front of our home and, and it works, but, um, that side of the street, I mean, I, I sit in my chair right next to the window, um, and I can see that corner, that four-way stop, and it is dangerous. The people there, a lot of people don't even stop, they just kind of roll right through it, or they don't even roll right through it, they just go right through it. And there are kids around there all the time, in the summer, they're going to the pool, in the school year, they're walking to and from school, and to have a sidewalk that close to the road just seems like an accident waiting to happen. I think, I hit, I see, I, I mean, people have no issues walking across the street and walking down the one on the east side, so I'm kind of in agreement with my, my fellow neighbors that think we should maybe revisit that and maybe just take a look at what we already have, and, you know, and the homeowners, and in regards to that comment about the homeowners, I don't think they're wrong to be selfish for their property a little bit. I mean, they work hard to make it beautiful. You know, our neighbors have beautiful landscaping, and to be able to keep that, I don't think that that's, you know, being, them being selfish by bringing it up here and how important it is to them. So, that's my piece. Thank you, thank you for listening, appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for your input, we appreciate that. Okay, anyone else out there in the public that would like to come up to the podium? Okay, come on up.
Uh, John Baumann, I'm on nineteen-oh-five Douglas. My question is, the sidewalks can be right next to Douglas, and Douglas is quite a wide street. By the time that snowplow has that snow off the street, it's not uncommon to have two, two and a half feet of snow, not at the curb, but even three feet in, and on a really snowy winter, it'll go all the way, I've got a brick wall in front of my house, it'll go all the way to the wall. So, are we supposed to, and it's an ordinance, we have to keep our sidewalks clean. How are we gonna do that? Do we all go buy a Bobcat and then take Bobcat driving lessons, or get one for the neighborhood? That's not gonna be simple to get that snow off there, we've all cleaned our driveway off after a snowplow goes by and then had to clean it out again. Well, that's gonna be the length of our whole property, and I don't see a lot of young people here that live there, which doesn't matter, that's a moot point, but, uh, how are we supposed to get that snow off of there? It's not gonna be just a snowblower, so that's my, one of my points. I agree with my neighbors, everything they've said, and I respect the safety issue too, but, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate your input. Okay, anyone else wanna come up to the podium and speak? Okay, I'm seeing no movement. Okay, well, again, uh, right now, we have, there, there is no action to be taken at this time, this was a discussion, unless it, someone brings action from the commission. So, um, I do know that we've already given direction on, on this specific item, so I would ask right now for any commission discussion.
I have a couple of questions for Ross, but I'm not trying to be smart, but that's what we deal with all around town. It'd be the same as my neighborhood, snowplows come by and throw it on the sidewalk, and everybody else has to move it, so, but. Uh, no. Ross, I, do you agree with Mr. Marlowe?
No, Mr. Marlowe and I have a difference of opinion on this.
I have another question. Let's say we went through the process he wants to, where we, and, and let them all know, they come to a meeting, they say they're, we can still approve it even if they don't want it.
Yes, yeah.
So it's kind of a mute point. Either way, even if you went through the process, we could still approve it.
Now, Mr. Marlowe and I disagree about the process involved, um, but essentially, he's correct in that the procedure that he's referencing was not the procedure city staff followed. Um, but that's a, in, in my legal opinion, that's a process design for assessment, both in our ordinance and in state statute. That's the, the resolution necessity is a, is a constitutional mandate that's also been created in the form of statute so that it's followed uniformly and, and that is a, an assessment procedure, 'cause you're requiring the private property owner with adjacent property to pay for it.
Thank you. Um, I've gone a one-eighty on this, um, after talking to City Manager Leon about some different things. I'm in planning and zoning, and the time that's put into these projects, the planning, it started in twenty-twenty-two, right? The, just this project itself has been going on for six, seven, eight months, and so it's a really disastrous trend if we start taking something all the way through, through the bid process, approved by the city commission, and then all of a sudden, we decide to make changes. I think that's a, a can of worms to open and could disrupt the whole process. I mean, the contractors will be frustrated, it just throws everything to a tizzy, we'll be delayed on our projects. So I understand people don't want certain things. But again, I think, I agree with, um, I'm sorry, I forget your name, the retired teacher, I was a teacher too, and I think the sidewalks there, people are gonna use it. Um, the only thing I would say is, after listening to the discussion, I wonder if it shouldn't be put a few feet off the, off the curb, just for safety. But, that's my thought.
Uh, but Commissioner Conkling, if we were to do that, that would probably, you know, some of the landscaping and things that we're trying to avoid, those would be compromised.
I agree, but if, if the concern is it's too close from the neighbors that are gonna have it, then let's rectify that problem and move it off this, off the curb a little bit.
Okay. Okay, any other, any other commission discussion at all? Okay, hearing none, then again, this was a non-actional item, then we will move on to the next item. Okay. All right, so, new business, item number four, the Aquatic Center Debt Service Prepayment, December twenty-twenty-five. Consideration of memorandum number twenty-five dash one-three-four recommending that the city commission approve resolution number twenty-five dash thirty to transfer funds from the five-oh-five construction account to make an early prepay of six-hundred thousand dollars on December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, towards a debt service for the Huether Family Aquatic Center. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, commission discussion.
Just to refresher, this puts us kind of ahead of the game as far as paying off the pools, is that right?
That's correct. Essentially, it will match our current opt-out mill levy taxes received annually, so that debt service matches what's coming in per, every year.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone from the public? Okay, roll call.
Sarda?
Aye.
Conkling?
Aye.
Hunoff?
Aye.
Mosher?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Benson?
Aye.
Birch?
Aye.
Mayor Villanueva?
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, item number five under new business, the alley reconstruction bid recommendation. Consideration of memorandum number twenty-five dash one-three-nine recommending that, thank you. Okay, so the motion is second, any commission discussion?
Sit there, I'm just curious.
I think we'll try to rebid it next year, next spring, I'm hearing.
Hey, good question. Okay, uh, last item on, under new business, item number six, the online bill pay credit card payments for utilities. Consideration of memorandum number twenty-five dash one-four-zero recommending the city commission approve Zift as a new payment processing vendor and their attached processing fees as part of the current Casell software implementation project, and authorize the city manager or her designee to sign related. Okay, last on the agenda, future business, again, this is a time for us, the commissioners, to address on the agenda tonight, and.